Just took a minute.
Hi, Lee. I didn't say hello to you earlier.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Good evening. Okay, is everybody ready?
Ready.
I think we're ready.
Okay. It's so funny, these two clocks are lined up, but they're two minutes off.
They are from the phones, for sure.
The official clock, yeah.
We're at seven oh two.
So I'll wait.
I'll wait a minute more. Then we'll be all in sync here.
There we go. Good evening, everybody. Like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting of the Village of Walton Hills of Tuesday, March first, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Second order of business roll call.
Councilman Nielsen.
Here.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller.
Here.
Councilwoman Allen.
Here.
Councilman Spitznagle.
Here.
Councilman Whedon.
Here.
All of council present, along with our fiscal officer, Angela Revay. I know I talked to John Montello, our loss lister today, and I know he did send an email, asked us to excuse him because he has a family medical issue, something his family's been dealing with. So we hope everything gets better with them. So if we had a question, you can be reached by phone. Okay, but I think we'll be fine. Any comments from anybody related to the agenda? Also welcome to the residents that are watching our live stream. Any comments from them there? Also welcome to type that in. Okay. We'll give that little delay there, so we'll give them a few minutes.
I don't see any viewers on. I don't see anybody watching right at the moment.
And they can, we can always, there's questions after the items too. We can entertain that, no problem there. So we'll move on to item four, which is the legislation. I know there was a infrastructure committee before our meeting. And I'm speaking to the chair and the members. I know they were actually going to talk about the construction Tulip Lane Water Main Replacement. And we did, that did go out for bids. We do have a recommendation from our engineer, which I'll just read in the record. And we'd like to have that on for legislation for the council meeting. We can talk about it tonight if there's, needs to be any discussion. And also next Tuesday in our COW meeting, I'll have it on there too at that time. So this is from Mr. Gelati. He just put, Dear Mayor Colgarth, the village has received two bid proposals for the project known as the Tulip Lane Water Main Replacement. Bid tabulation attached. I reviewed the bid proposal and identified the lowest and best bid possible proposal as that being submitted by Trax Construction in the amount of $139,555. References have successfully been checked. I am therefore recommending that Trax Construction Company be awarded the contract for the Tulip Lane Water Main Replacement. So we'd like to put that on for legislation. And if there's any questions to that, or if the infrastructure committee wants to make... Are you guys, you guys talk about that tonight? Are you in favor of that proposal?
Mayor Colgarth, members of council, yeah, we did discuss the project in the infrastructure committee meeting. However, we did not, you know, we did not entertain any votes in, you know.
Correct.
We just discussed it.
Right. And Joe would be available, or Rob, if we needed any questions. But I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We've been talking about that. We budgeted for it, and we'd like to move forward on that project. Any discussion on the legislation for it? Pretty clear cut, our standard legislation.
Mayor Colgarth?
Yes.
If I could, just, it was just a couple of things that I just, I could highlight from our infrastructure committee discussion for full council. Was that this project, this Tulip Water Replacement Project is well needed, as we all know. And we know that there's also grant funding or reimbursement from the City of Cleveland Department, Water Department. Some of the highlights of this project is that it is anticipated to only take 30 days, about 30 days worth of work for this project to be from start, whenever, from start to completion, based on the bid documents. And that's a good thing for the residents in the area of Tulip, Hickory, Chestnut, because we, you know, one of the questions that we asked Commissioner Calhoun to present at the pre-construction meeting, whenever that does happen, is to ensure that the residents are notified in advance if there are, you know, any potential water outages. If the contractor knows on a certain day that there may be interruption of water service that, you know, make sure that there's duly notification to those residents, whether it's door hangers or something like that prior. So don't want a surprise. Get ready to go to, go take a shower or wash dishes and there's no water. So that's just some of the discussion we had around it, was just some of those areas of concern. The other thing I'll just comment on related to this project is that the project that bidder, or the warty, Trax Construction did a very good job of coming in under the engineer's estimate. So it's, it's close, but you know, they did come in under the engineer's estimate. The other bidder was well above the engineer's estimate. So from a general sense, their support, we did not take a vote, but I think, you know, we didn't have any objection to this particular project, or bid, or award.
Good. Well, we'll have it on the COW meeting next week, in case any questions come up and we need to contact Joe, or if anybody has any questions to present to Joe, that I can, you know, forward them, or you can call Joe yourself, that's fine too. We all have great relationships with our engineer and our street commissioner. So we'll move that forward. And hopefully we'll get good weather, because that's going to make the difference in the 30 days. That always, you know, we were very fortunate with our Dunham Road project, and you know, weather kind of dictates all these road projects, because they're outside and so. But rain shouldn't hinder it too much. At least it's not a snow. It's not going to be in the winter when we start it, so. Any questions related, any questions from the residents related to Tulip Lane Water Main Replacement?
No, none here yet.
Okay.
Is there a timeframe, specific timeframe at this point?
Um, let's see.
Since I live on Tulip Lane.
Yeah, oh yeah, well, you'll be notified, and we'll let you know. I think they're looking at April, beginning of April, middle of April, latest May, I think is, but I, we'll have that, I can get that, I'll ask Joe. You don't have that spreadsheet, do you?
I don't have that, I don't have that, Mayor. The only other thing I did want to add is that, as it relates to the 30 days, there is an asterisk there.
Let me see here.
The projected 30 days for the project, that's depending on, as long as the materials are readily available. So there is, you know, there is that caveat there. So if all goes well, it's a 30-day project.
Right. But I'll get that, I'll get the, because that was in the bid documents too, I can have that for the next COW meeting. So I can read that in the record. That's not a problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We did discuss also, along with that, since there's a resident here, I don't know if you watched the meeting or not, but we, the committee asked about service outages while they're doing that for a month. And Mr. Calhoun stated that what they usually do is put the structure in parallel and then connect it up, whether they do that all at once or stages. But the service outage will probably only be a couple hours or so, two, four hours, and you'll be certainly notified, you know, with a marker on your door or something like that.
It's going to be an inconvenience like any project, but the end result will outweigh that inconvenience for the residents, because we know we get a lot of breaks on there, and that's worse. So we'll keep you informed on that. Any other questions related to that item? Okay.
Water main people, part of people joke that they actually should just live alone.
Any other comments?
Mayor Colgarth?
Yes.
If there's no other questions or comments, when it comes to this, again, I would be more than pleased, as Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, more than happy to introduce this, that resolution.
Okay, point taken. Any questions from any residents?
No.
Live streaming? Okay, then we'll move on to our next item. Discussion, discuss, discuss, discussion, gosh, regarding police body worn, long day, body worn camera grant. I invited our police chief, Stan Jaworski, and our Mike Gervasi, one of our sergeants, and to speak to this. Myself and Mary as safety and insurance chairman, we're going to talk to it, but it's body cams and cameras related to the police department is something that's been very important, and I didn't want to not speak correctly to it. So I thought, what better people than the people that live it every day? So I'm glad the chief and Mike were able to be here tonight, so I'm just going to open the floor. Angela might have a little discuss, discussing relating to the grant part of it and the money, because that changed a little bit too, so. But, well, Stan, you want to talk to, but go ahead, Stan.
Back in November of...
Is that on yet?
We applied for a grant for upgrading our body cameras, our cruiser cameras. And when we sent in the estimate, it was like $50,890. At the end of January, we received notification from OCJS saying that we received $30,340 for the grant. Mike looked at, spoke to WatchGuard in Motorola, they're one and the same, and he was able to cut, we had, I think, additional nine cameras or six? Nine cameras. So, because there was, we were so far off on our estimate quote, Mike went back to them, and he was able to readjust the quote, so that we can get everything that we need to upgrade. I'm going to turn it over to Mike, he's the one that spoke to Motorola and did all the background.
Yeah, Mike did distribute a very detailed packet that we all have in front of him, so we can follow.
Oh, I have it.
Yeah, we do.
I like the color version better.
Um, I'm good, I got 20 copies, actually.
Good evening. As the chief said, we did cut costs a little bit on it. The initial project was $58,910. That was pared down to $58,890, and then shortly thereafter, we got the grant, we had to pare it down. The reason we pared it down was that I spoke to Matt Marino, who is the, kind of like the general area manager of Motorola. Motorola just recently purchased WatchGuard. We've been using the WatchGuard cameras with our agency since 2006. And I believe it was 2019, we went to the body cameras, and we were doing what's called a library express version. It's basically, it's a standalone server. There's nothing tied in, no extra rack server. So the officer would have to come in, go to that computer, click on it, sign it out at the end of the shift. They would then dock it into its individual station, and then it would download the video. So the video would then sit stored on that server. It cannot be changed, it cannot be altered. There's only one person that could remove said video, and that would be me. So that's, henceforth, the term is library evidence express. So there's no way that the video could be altered, changed, shortened, lengthened, et cetera. So what we did was, with this grant, instead of having that feature where we would have to come in and download the video manually, and then worrying about whether or not the server, or not the server, but the computer ends up getting zapped by a power surge, we opted to do what's called a back office server. And that would also include the automatic upload of the video from our cruisers. The officers would still have to take the 16 gigabyte stick out. When it gets full, stick it in there, then they have to wait 15, 20, 30, 40 minutes, depending on how much video is on that stick. And then once it's downloaded, they would remove the stick and then put it back in the car. With this feature, you would pull, be able to pull into the station, automatically download. And in the event that prosecutor or defense attorney wants to see that particular video, instead of us bringing officer or officers off the road, making copies on the DVD, charging them the excessive cost, we can click and send them a secured link for that video only via email, so there's, there's less footwork, so to speak. So if you want, I can go line by line, like I did with the chief through this, if you want, or if you have any specific questions. Your choice.
I think what, I think what's important, and Stan, you tell me, and Mary, is some of the things we talked about, is how this improves our present. We actually have a very good system and have done well, but we know it's a little bit getting outdated, and we wanted to go with something more updated, and you've listed some things, but isn't there some other things that make this system better than what we have, that are important?
It's a little bit more user friendly. It takes a lot less time from the officers to download the video. And in this case, they pull in, video's automatically downloaded. There's no chance of the hard, being lost on the hard drive, not that there ever was. There's been instances where we've had vehicles that were damaged, and we had to get the information off of it. What we did was, we just took the server, the hard drive itself, out of the car, sent it to them, they then turned, extracted from it. So there's really no chance of it being lost. It just becomes a little bit more user friendly, a little bit more secure, if you will.
Mike, one of the things, I think, as we just, some of the things that have happened in the last few months, that is important about the system, let's say if the media wanted parts of the camera, but it was still under investigation, and the prosecutor and the police felt, but we want to give them some of the footage, but we don't want to give them some things that could, you know, hinder our chance of completing the case or...
Right, impeding the investigation.
Yes, which is very important, and we found that out, you know, just sometimes you have to keep things to yourself while an investigation goes on, so you can follow through, and you don't want to tip off the person you're looking for.
Right.
And we couldn't do certain things with our old cameras, but certain things we can do with the newer cameras.
Right. One of it's called a redaction program. People hear the word redaction, they think automatically the infamous black magic marker on the JFK stuff, things like that. What the redaction program does, it allows the officer, namely, it would probably more likely be the person that would have access to it, the opportunity to blur out faces, victims of sexual assault, children, people that are not involved, license plates. So as if I'm standing here talking to Mr. Whedon, and I could, I'm looking at him, but say, the chief would be standing behind me, and there's glass there, the glass wall, it's picking up his reflection. So what I could do is, I can click on Mr. Whedon's face, blur it out, click on that window, blur it out, reflections from vehicles, bumpers, anything, even glasses, that would tip off people that are not actively portrayed in there. Or in the event of something that may not be appealing to people, it might be a gruesome scene, we could pixel that out, just, you know, just to have some type of decency, so to speak. As of yet, I am not familiar if it can alter voices, or blur out social security numbers, things of that nature. But that's what the redactive feature is, that's one of the features that was added into here. Now, the redactive feature would only be available through this back office server. The back office server is a standalone feature, will not tie into our system in any way, shape or form. And they also have ports, would be extraction ports, there would be like little antennas that would be on the west and the north side of the building where the vehicles are. So when the officers pull in, it automatically uploads naturally. The more ports there are, the quicker the upload, the fewer ports, longer the upload. So it's all dependent on what our internet server capabilities are.
Well, good, that was one of the things I...
Mr. Whedon, you have... Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Mr. Gervasi. That's kind of the area my question was going to go to, is about, when you mentioned about the drive up and the automatic download, and I'm glad to hear you mention about the port. So will the information, is all this information shared on an internal, or backdoor, or a hard server? Or is any of this cloud-based?
No, it's not cloud-based. Cloud-based would be way more costly than what it is, and we only have access to it. Naturally, in the quote, they do an onsite maintenance, there is some formal training that they have to instruct the officers on how to do certain things, such as downloading their video. And in some instances, you can have the video loaded to that officer's desktop. So like when they would sign in, any stops that they would have will come to theirs, and they cannot be altered, changed, deleted, anything like that. So that would be there for their reference. So if, for some instance, I'm not available, or the officer that's handling the program is not available to extract that video, the chief, senior officer, whoever says, hey, I need that video, the chief wants a video, he can go in and make a copy of it from his desktop, and then forward it to the chief.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I just want to be clear, to make sure I understood what you said about redaction, and so that I think everyone else will understand it. You are not removing anything but just our ability to see certain items or certain people, such as children, possibly license plates. Nothing is removed to your site, but if you see things on TV, on a news camera, you notice how it's pixeled out. So this allows, this would allow our officers to do that if needed be.
Right.
But nothing is ever removed permanently.
Correct. In the event that we do have to forward some type of video to the news media, that clip is released in its entirety. Any cutting, chopping, moving, anything like that, that's on them, that does not fall on us.
They do it, not us, right.
They do that for, since we know how the media is.
I just wanted to be clear, because when you say the word redaction, and people kind of freak out, and you know, I know, I can use it on my computer at work to remove, you know, sentences out of the...
Yes.
Documents I have, but it's not the same in this case. It's just a matter of not allowing us to see certain items that are not of our own best interest.
The redaction program is a pixelation.
Pixelations.
Distort, that should have been the proper term, but...
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I've got a few questions. I don't see in here, how, I'm missing, how many cameras actually is this for?
It's for the body cameras and for the car cameras.
How many cameras?
That would be a total of nine and nine, for a total of 18. So if you're looking, and you see a number in there that says eight?
Yeah.
That would, the reason, support licensing fee, that is going to be put onto the upcoming car that we have coming into. That licensing fee will be attached to that camera.
And that's another thing about the licensing, software redactive, single user license for $4,995, that's $4,995.
Yes, sir.
Is that a permanent license, or does that have to be removed?
If it's on that, if it's a single user licensing, I would have to guess that, but I cannot give you a definitive answer on that. Usually, anything that requires a yearly renewal, it will state annual. So if you look, let's go back to... Let's do page two. Actually, on page, page three, you'll see evidence, library Vista V300, annual device licensing support fee, that's nine at $195.
Mm-hmm.
That is an annual, so say this system comes in play in May of this year, the following May, we have to renew that license. And this, the cost per year, I don't know if it will go up, I don't know how Motorola is. So everything looks the same as far as the licensing fee, whether it's either on a body camera or a car, so that should remain at the, as of this quote, $195 per unit. So it would be 18 times the $195, gives you roughly about $3,500 change per year, if it stays the same price. So that, that annual licensing fee is a necessary evil that would have to be going on for the next however many years.
And we could find out about what, Brian, about your questionnaire, about the, on the last one, but I know what you're saying, Mike, since it's not listed as an annual or five-year or three-year, it's probably a one-time fee, but we could probably find that out for sure.
I have a call in to Mr. Marino, he has not returned my call, I believe he's on vacation as well.
On F. four, on that $5,000, that $4,995, that was your question?
Well, yeah, and it's not listed on, what Mr. Officer Gervasi pointed out, it's not listed as a...
So it probably is a one-time, but we can confirm that.
Well, yeah, well, the $195, which Officer Gervasi just said, that would be a yearly payment.
Right. If it says annual, it would be annual.
Yeah, well, oh yeah, it does say annual, okay.
Yeah. But we can confirm that, that would be something to confirm.
Yeah, because we have the web server site license, well, that's the license key, and so I'm assuming that would be a one-time, since that doesn't say annual also. The video quality of these cameras are, I'm assuming, is much better than the current cameras we have?
It's the same cameras we have. The cameras are not changing. The same system that we have, that we purchased back in 2014, some of the cameras, those cameras are still in play. With WatchGuard, we've had cameras that we bought back in 2006. The quality was equally or better than anything coming out when we got rid of those cameras back in 2014, and those were DVD-based.
Okay.
So we ended up trading those cameras and going with the 4RE, which is a digital. So we have the option of doing a low definition. There's a standard definition, high, medium, low, and a high definition, high, medium, low. Problem is, if you do high definition, you use more space. So in, we've had instances where everybody's like, why's my camera dying? Why is this? Why is the space being, because if you record everything at high def, you're going to, something, you're just going to go through terabytes. Traditionally, we go through about two terabytes, I'm sorry, we went through an eight-terabyte unit for our standalone current that we have in two years. That was all the body cameras, all car video, and that's everything from a traffic warning to a critical event, such as an OVI. We have certain events programmed at high def, things like OVI, critical incident, things like that. So the sound and audio is at a higher definition rate.
And this was, where did I read, was it 36 or 35 terabytes, something like that?
Uh, no, it should be 57.
57, okay.
Yes, that was pared down from the original 116, I believe.
Mr. Mayor?
No, 58.
58.
Yeah, 58.
Yes, go ahead, Jennifer.
Sergeant Gervasi, so you said you guys do have the ability to change from, to the high definition?
Yes, but the problem is, is we don't set it at that feature.
Right.
We can do an in-car feature where a traffic stop turns into something a lot more, where we can, the officer can hit it, change it at the high-def rate. So if it turns into something simple as a disabled vehicle, and God forbid it turns into an officer-involved shooting, even though you wouldn't be able to, somebody might hit it, you know, might stop it, you can go back, and then you can hit the button, only to change the recording rate, the definition rate. That's it. It's not going to omit, it's not going to delete, it's not going to alter anything other than the quality of the video. That's it.
Mr. Colgarth? Yes, go ahead.
I just have one more question, it's just, you know, you may have an answer, I'm not sure, just in the general sense, when you, when we transfer from, or upgrade from one system to the other, and the old server, is there, you know, what happens with the...
The old server currently is on external terabyte drives. I have two eight-terabyte drives actually functioning actively as we speak. Once those are full, we extract those. Generally, we do not keep... civil, civil suit, and in the event that we just instituted now, there's an issue, we'll say an OVI, you have up to a year to prosecute an OVI. Some servers will automatically delete after a certain timeframe, and that's one of these, you generally, after thirty days, sixty days, whatever, just because your space is going to be, it's sort of like a drawer. If you put too many files in, you're gonna have to take out the old stuff, put new stuff in.
Right.
So what we're instructing our officers, if you have something such as an OVI, automatically make a copy of it, insert it in its file, that way we have a copy of it in the event something happens.
So there's, so there's nothing from the state of Ohio, from the Ohio records retention, that says you have to keep it, everything for two years, or five years, or seven years, or something like that?
Everything that we, everything that we're doing is something that was implemented years ago.
Right.
Um, like I said, I have traffic stops going back from two thousand six on DVD downstairs. As the chief, he ended up going through all of them, and he's like, why are we keeping these? I said, because you never know.
Yeah.
So...
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other questions? Yeah, we'll talk about, that related to cameras before we get into the financial end of it.
Okay.
Any questions from any residents that are here, or any residents that are watching our live stream?
None on here.
Our non-residents? Okay.
We did have a couple of people say today that we have good sound quality and everything looks good, so the new laptop was what we needed, I guess.
And thank you, sir, and for spending some time and getting hooked up correctly.
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have another question. What is, what's the time estimate on getting these?
I could not give you that answer.
Right.
Um, just the units themselves, just for the cars, they're probably about twelve to fourteen weeks out. Everything's, WatchGuard is probably one of the, you see a lot of videos, that Axion, WatchGuard is one of the larger video companies in the country, probably, they won a twenty-three million dollar RC, Royal Canadian Mounted Police contract several years ago. So they're being used widely throughout the country and probably North America, so...
And just to, just to reference Motorola everywhere as well, because this is the same Motorola rep we're dealing with for the radios that were put in place last year, so...
Motorola ended up taking over WatchGuard. We had some little hiccups that came along the way, a little bit of customer service, that one-on-one that we used to have, but we've got past that, so...
Thank you.
I have a question. Stan, do we have a timeframe in which the grant money needs to be used?
Uh, June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, thank you.
That has to be invoiced and submitted.
Will purchase first and submit invoice, thank you.
Get a copy of a bill and submit it to OCPS.
Yep.
And the grant amount is for the thirty thousand?
Thirty thousand and three hundred and forty thousand.
And this, this price here is the forty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents. So it's roughly a difference of fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay. And sir, if you were...
So we would have to, we would absorb the fifteen thousand dollars, correct?
If you were counsel, I'd like to see how the system is that we have in place. Just let me know, I'll be more than happy to show.
I would appreciate that, and...
Sure.
They might, they might take you up on that. I know, I found it interesting, and when we, what did, I looked for, was one case, what was it? I can't remember now. It was a year or two ago. But, that's okay. So our question is, Angela, do you want to talk about that? I'm in favor of it, I, I think mostly, you know, counsel is, is too, I think we just gotta talk about...
Yeah, I do think it's a necessity.
I think it's something needed, yeah.
Um, and Stan and I had talked about the grant in the past, it's, we didn't budget specifically for this, not knowing what our grant was going to be. So I will take a look at what I've already put into police budget to see what I can pull from there, if anything, but my thought immediately goes on the fifteen thousand, you know, we're gonna get that second round of funding from ARPA, and so there will be some left, if we only do one dump truck, let's put it that way for now, if we do one dump, we'll still have some more that we could pull from there. And then, God willing, we also have a windfall, and we can do two dumps this year. But, so that's where my thoughts go in first, is that ARPA funding would obviously be a legitimate place to pull that other fifteen from, if I don't have any other place out of your, you know, I don't think I have an extra fifteen just sitting in your budget for anything, but, um, but yeah.
So you don't see a problem in a finding or absorbing?
I don't see a problem, yeah, no, I don't see a problem absorbing it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, you'd have to come up to the mic, everybody that talks, because we get it on lead, so if you want to come up to the mic and state your name and...
Just one quick question, just to understand. Lee Nielsen, Tulip Lane, would this be a capital expense?
Yes, yes it would.
So the dump trucks are also a capital expense?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all, thanks.
And because both service the village, they fall well into our parameters of how we can spend those ARPA funds. Yep.
Thank you.
You got it.
No problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jennifer.
Um, during Councilman Weeden's infrastructure meeting and talking with Rob, since you had mentioned the dump trucks, I'm sure he'll get in touch with Angela, but he's projecting that those dump, that that dump truck would not even arrive until twenty-three.
Ooh.
Yeah.
See this? That's all about timing with everything lately.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and I was gonna ask that, because he and I had talked about him going out quotes, and I didn't know where he stood on that. So even the first one may not be here.
He's, Rob, not to speak for Rob, but he said that the trucks are not coming all in one piece.
Oh, yeah.
Like they would be ordered, so...
Okay, so I'll touch base with him.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor Coleridge?
Yes.
If I may, I guess the key, the key for that whole truck part piece that Mr. Cowman, Commissioner Cowman talked about, as it relates to the funding coming from the ARPA funds, and I believe the ARPA, ARPA funds have a time limit in which to be expended?
I believe we have till the end of twenty-twenty-four, I will double-check that. It's, it's the end of either twenty-three or twenty-four, and I feel like it's twenty-four.
Yes.
Because they were coming in those two segregated pieces.
Correct, they extended it.
So, yeah, so, so I believe that we have till the end of twenty-twenty-four to expend them, yes.
Okay.
And I will get you firm on that.
I, I just, and I, I think everybody here feels the same way, I just feel this is, I know, because we talked about it with the grant, the chief, we all talked about it, and I know there's an added expense there, but I think it's well-spent, very important. It's not just important for our officers, it's important for the residents and the people that we serve, and just protects everybody all the way around and gives us more options, and this is a better system, an important system.
I would agree. I asked Mike to give me the long and short of what came out of the original quote, once he got everything pared down, so that we could, you know, get a visual, and the original quote at the fifty-seven thousand and change, we had some extra cameras we were going to order, which would also include extra warranty fees and licensing fees, and then the server was scaled down from a fifty-seven terabyte to a one-sixteen terabyte approximately. So, you know, lots of things, you know, going forward, hopefully we could get more cameras down the road, but instead of adding on to what we've got, we were able to narrow it down and upgrade what's there, and upgrade that server.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Speaking of that server, Officer Gervasi, the fifty-eight terabyte server, is that in and of itself expandable, so we could, is it possibly expandable?
I believe not, sir. They give you, actually, what they do is they give us a workbook, and they request it, so this way, it doesn't fall on them for undershooting what we utilize.
Backward.
Makes sense?
Uh-huh.
Because if we come in, we say, hey, if they came in and said, oh, we're gonna give you a fifty-seven terabyte server, and we actually needed a hundred and twenty terabyte, they don't want the liability or the pain for somebody to come back and say, you guys undersold us something. So they give you a workbook, and what I did is I went in and I put the maximum number of cars, two to three hours collectively of video per shift, and I, because our shifts are in twelve-hour shifts, I did the day shift as shift one, afternoon shift as shift two, and naturally, on evenings, our call volume goes up a little bit more than on day shift. So collectively, we have roughly anywhere from seven to nine hours of video, that's body camera and car video. And then average time, and everything's broken down in there, and it automatically starts adding what you need. And Mr. Moreno looked at it, he thought the numbers were good, and in the event that we do go over, if we see that we're, I, I don't, to go over fifty-seven terabytes, it's a lot in, I shouldn't say needless video, but there's something wrong.
So you're very comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with fifty-seven. As I said, we utilize eight terabyte, I'm sorry, we went through eight terabytes in two years. And very seldom are we running four or five officers a shift, very seldom is every officer making twenty, thirty stops a shift. It's highly a problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'm in agreement with you, if this is within our budget capabilities, I would definitely say this is something for the safety of our officers and our citizens that we should go forward with, if we can do this.
One other feature I'd like to add with our body cameras, we can have what's called a after-the-fact record. So in the event, every camera and car camera has a pre-event. Our body cameras are set, I believe, at fifteen seconds pre-event, so anything fifteen seconds prior to the officer activating the button is recorded. It's video, no sound. Same thing within the cars, it's a thirty-second pre-event. We can set it up to ten minutes. Ten minutes is a long time, two minutes is a long time, but that would allow us, say you're sitting at a stoplight, and you're sitting there in Norfield Alexander, you've got a red light, two cars go racing northbound, light turns green, they're already racing through, so you capture the offense. So it has pre-event recording. In the event that something occurred outside that thirty or fifteen-second window, we have the capability of going in and what's called a after-the-fact or a recapturing it. So as the vehicle is running constant, as long as the vehicle's running, the hard drive is running. So in the event something happens in front of the officer's car, and the officer's not there, they can go back, actually, I can go back, create an event, make that a video that we need to see as to actually what happened. Same thing with on the body cameras, however, it's only limited to a certain timeframe. Usually, it's like one day and sixteen hours. So, again, just sound or just video, no sound.
Interesting.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would this be something we'll be putting on the council meeting this month? Because it sounds like the need to get these ordered...
Yeah.
And be able to use the funds.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna, we're gonna, I was gonna have John make legislation.
Okay.
We can look at it in the next COW meeting, and then...
As an emergency?
Yeah, as an emergency or first reading, whatever council chooses. I would ask for suspension, I don't see if everybody's in agreement, why not get it so we can, you know, be one of the first ones to receive the grant? It's always not a bad thing to get everything in, get them ordered, especially if there's a lead time, as Mike mentioned, on the, on the software and everything, so...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, with the lead time there, I would like to see that for suspension.
That's up to your counsel, I'll be glad to ask for that, and I do support that, and I know the chief and his department supports it. Mike, you did a great job, appreciate you and the chief looking at it and reducing the amount of it, to keep us more within our budget, and, but still provide the protection we need, you know? So I think it's a great thing. Any other questions related to the body cams? And this package, the WatchGuard package? Motorola Solutions. Mike, where are we, and it's chief compared to other departments? Pretty much in the same as far as body cams and car cams?
Uh, different agencies utilize different video. I know Norfield Village uses a Wi-Fi feature where they have to take the body camera out of the station, dock it into the car, and that becomes their lapel mic. However, the problem is, is you lose your audio from your car cam, if you're a large distance away from your car. It records the video to your car and to your body camera, but once you get out of the range of the car, now it becomes a standalone body camera. You still have the video, but you don't have the audio to your car, whereas with our units, we're still utilizing the separate mic pack, which has a range of about twenty-five hundred feet. Not that we'll ever be twenty-five hundred feet from our vehicle, but in the event our vehicle, we're inside a building and our car is outside, and as we all know, this building is not very conducive to telecommunications, but if we're inside, it would be able to record if our car was outside, in the event we came into a house or a building.
Active shooter, something like that.
Whatever the case may be. In the event that the officer didn't have a chance to activate their camera, but then we can still extract the video, but not the sound from it. Because as with anything, their safety is more paramount than hitting the button, but all of our officers know, I've got guys that have gone up on disabled vehicles and subconsciously just hit the video. So I, I don't foresee a problem with that, with our people.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jennifer.
Um, I did a ride time, and chief set up so that my son could do a ride time, and I thought it was fascinating that I could sit in the car, watch on the little screen everything from the officer's camera, hear everything that was going on, they had turned the volume on for me and stuff, and I would really suggest that every council member do some ride time, even if it's just a couple hours with one of our officers, to see the things that they go through and, and what they really are dealing with out there. So, but it was fascinating, and I really enjoyed it, and I highly encourage everyone to try it, at least for a few hours.
Any other questions? Any questions from council?
Nothing on the laptop.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have one last thing, and it's just by chance, chief, that you're here, so I don't know if you could answer it, or Sergeant Gervasi, not related to the cameras. Earlier today, I had a call from a resident that has a family business in Crick Road area, and they were asking if anything could be done about all of the large amount of abandoned, seemingly abandoned vehicles that are in some parking lots there, up on blocks, and looks like they're being pieced out. Rob was in here earlier with infrastructure, and I asked him, and he said that really falls under six sixty? That that's not something in the building department?
There's a couple of companies in town, we've been, a lot of them are truck drivers, their vehicles break down, and some of them are company cars, trying to find a needle in a haystack who the car falls under. Could we have told them that's something we have to check with our prosecutor? I know with, under, there's certain ordinance, I don't know the state ordinance off the top of the head, off the top of my head, if a vehicle is left on property, whether it's private, I'd say fuel mark. Fuel mark doesn't, it doesn't necessarily fall on fuel mark, just as long as the vehicle has been logged, and as long as it's been there for, I believe it's four or six hours, we can have that vehicle removed. Doesn't fall on us, it falls on them. We can take that vehicle, we would tow it, the vehicle's not inventoried, obviously, because there's no keys or anything, they would just pull it up and take it off the property.
Yes, some of those vehicles are like literally sitting up on blocks and wheel wells, you know, I mean, it just looks unsafe even, too, and stuff there, so...
We would have to check with the prosecutor, prosecutor and the law director, because Rich is telling me we'd be very busy, and the mayor would be probably getting a bunch of phone calls from some people within the next six hours after that happens, as to where their car is. So we just want to make sure that we're on good legal footing before we take any aggressive action like that.
Sure, no, I appreciate that, but they, you know, they, they're through there several times a week, and they said it's been like that for a long time now, so, but thank you, guys.
Go ahead, Jennifer, make your comments, Stan.
Problems is handle it on street, road. What they're doing is a lot of the trucking companies are like subleasing their parking lot, trucking companies, so there's like new people in and out of there all the time, parking their trucks. As soon as spring breaks and that, and the weather warms up, we'll look into it and see what we can do. I know several years ago, we had sent letters to the one company on tree, and they did remove and cleaned up their property, but once again, it's back to where it was, if not worse.
Yeah.
So we'll definitely look into it and, you know, get that corrected.
Thank you. I, I did ask Rob if, can they like rent their property out for storage, you know, and what, and Rob said, well, pretty much, yeah, you know, if... said, well, pretty much, yeah, you know, if...
They've been doing it for many years.
If that's what they're doing, you know, but thank you, guys.
We can, Stan and council, we could have a meeting, me, you and Rob and, and John and kind of lay out a game plan there. Any other questions related to item five? If not, we'll move off to that. Everybody good? Mike, Stan, anything else you want to add to that? We appreciate you both taking the time this evening.
Oh, gee, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a question. Was there anything else? I know there was some word about a grant for another dog. I thought that, I thought that we had heard, no? Okay. I must have that mixed up with something else, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. All right. Item six, other business. I have a few things here I'd like to discuss. As you know, you received a letter from Mr. Kalman relating to our senior, senior lawn care. I know at our last meeting, I had a letter from Rob recommending that we exercise the second year of the contract. So we did speak to the contractor and they have a right, just like we do, to either accept that second year or not accept it. And they said they didn't want to accept it because they feel they can't do it within that budget due to the cost of labor and gas.
Yes.
So they said they're interested in rebidding, you know, entering a bid if we put it out for bids. So I do have a letter from Mr. Kalman. Did you guys talk about the infrastructure at all or no? Okay, I don't think so. It doesn't really fall into there, but, so this is from Mr. Kalman. Mayor, after I recommended exercising our second year option with Sharp Skates for senior lawn care, in my letter dated February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, Sharp Skates reached out to me and indicated that due to the rise in fuel costs and inflation, they were not able to perform the lawn care services for twenty-twenty-two. It has been advertised, so we did decide, we have no choice, but we do want to get a service for our residents. It has been advertised that the, that the village will be accepting bids for our senior lawn care program. The notice will be posted in Neighborhood News as well as the Twinsburg Bulletin. Bids will be received by March eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. Once I review the bids, I will forward my recommendation of the contractor to council and the mayor and the administration. So that's that letter. So we're kind of at that. Okay. I know, did you discuss, I did have here the memo from Rob and the photos about the small cell towers? Did you discuss that in your? We did not. Oh, you did. Did not discuss that, well, we can discuss that now. Everybody in their mailbox plus in their emails received a memo from Mr. Kalman relating to two small cell towers that will be erected in the utility right of way. And I'll read his memo too. GPD group on behalf of Verizon has reached out to me to discuss the proposed installation of two small cell towers. I have shared and reviewed with them the village codified ordinance ten sixty-seven. That was the ordinance that we just put in place relating to cell towers, which regulates small cell facilities and the use of public right of way. The locations of the small cell towers are Alexander Road between eight, one eight eight five oh and one eight nine one eight in the right of way across from Morningside, and then Walton Road in the right of way behind the deli. That one is in front of our, our piece of property that the village owns. I have included photo simulations of both sites. The poles will be smaller than the existing utility poles and measure approximately thirty-eight feet above grade. The poles will be installed in the utility right of way. GPD has submitted a formal application with construction drawings, which have been reviewed and approved. Permits are ready to issue as soon as they choose a contractor for installation. So they still haven't applied for their permits. They did submit drawings and stuff. Just so council knows, we have legislation in place. There is no way to stop a utility company from coming in and installing anything in the, in the utility right of way. In fact, speaking with George Smarigan, who helped us with that ordinance, he says, if we had to do it today, our ordinance would be less restrictive because between the state and the federal government, we, communities and municipalities even have less...
Authority.
How can I say?
Less of a...
Permitting practices. All you can do is permit them. You can't, can't stop them from moving forward. Wish we could, but we can't. But we do have a very good permitting process, so at least compared to a lot of communities around us and a lot of communities in the state who have nothing in place, this council, along with the administration and our service department, our engineering department, and Smarigan, put a very good program together. So at least we're aware and they have to come to us before they do it instead of just doing it, even though we've had that happen too, even though we have a permitting program. All of a sudden, things just, these utility companies for some reason think they can just do what they want, so. But that, that is there. The other thing, I do have, this is something I'd like, just letting council know, the Saint Mary's Guild, which is a nonprofit, where's my letter here? I know I have a letter here from a resident. The Saint Mary's Guild approached myself asking if they would be able to use the community room on Wednesday, May eighteenth for their annual sale luncheon fundraiser. It is during the day. There is, that room is not booked on a Wednesday during the day and we don't foresee it being booked. And it is for a fundraiser. They do a lot of good things. They're a five oh one C organization, so they are allowed to have a fundraiser in that event center. And it's a very, it's not a very big thing. And I just wanted to let council know, I'd like to waiver the fee on that for them in support of the good things that the Saint Mary's Women's Guild does. And a lot of the members of it are also residents of our village. So if everybody's okay with that?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm fine with that. It's a hundred dollar fee, so.
It's good. Well, I think they're going to use the bigger room, so it'd be a little more, but...
Oh, they're going to be at the event center?
Yes.
Because you said community room.
Yeah, she called it here in her letter, I shouldn't, but she means the event center. So, and there's nothing at that time. She wanted an answer from me, so I did want to share it with council and not, just so everybody's aware of it. Everybody seems good with that, so I will answer them. I know we did grant the same thing to the, it's not the Bedford School Board, but it was the Bedford...
The Holly Ball?
It was, it was like, it's another, they support the Bedford school system. It was a five oh C.
Foundation.
Yeah, their foundation. And they didn't have the fundraiser due to COVID nineteen at the time, but we were going to waiver that fee because everything they do goes to the students of the school system, which our kids do benefit from too. So that was our way of giving back, but they didn't have it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was actually surprised that you said community room, because I thought, geez, they usually do that at Lederhartz Villan. It's a long act.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
What's happened, you know, they, with that, that's, I don't, because of the pandemic and COVID nineteen, I think they were looking for another option, so. Well, thank you, I appreciate that support there. I think that's all I have under other businesses. Anybody on council have anything for other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I actually do have a question is for Angela. One of the items that was brought up in the infrastructure meeting by Rob was the discussion on leasing vehicles.
Correct.
And we couldn't remember who was doing something with that, and I thought it was you, Angela, because most of that's all financing with the dealerships when you lease a car, lease any kind of vehicle like that. And he was saying that he knows that other communities are doing that.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you have any information even?
I need to revisit. When I called the dealership, they sent me to their finance person, this was while we were doing budget, and the finance person never called me back, you know, at their, whatever bank they would use. So I will need to revisit, which of course, when people don't call you back, it makes you less inclined to revisit that bank. I don't know if there's anyone else they go through, but I will call the same gentleman again and say, hey, I reached out in November. You never called me back. Right, exactly, exactly. So it fell off my radar in the meantime, but, but yeah, I will revisit the leasing option, of course.
Yes, and bring us up to speed on that, because I'm sure Rob would be interested besides all of us.
Right.
For the benefit of getting these trucks.
It would be ideal, and my only concern would be can we, credit wise, and we've had that discussion before, because knock on wood, we haven't carried a lot of credit, so that's a plus, but then on the downside of that, you know, as we all know, when we were young and getting our credit started, it takes a while to build up for that. So, so that would be the only thing that I could see being a barrier, if any, but we don't have, you know, other than our radios right now, that's, that's the one lease that we have out. So, which we paid an initial payment. We've got another one coming due, so it, you know, it was a decent lease for them to go buy if they're going to use that to determine some credit. So yeah, I will revisit that for sure.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Any other questions under new or old business? Other business, I should say. Any other business from residents that are here or viewing us through the live stream?
Nothing on live stream.
Go ahead, Don, if you want to come up to the mic, please. Now we'll be just like old times, see that?
No, it's a little slow. For the record, I'll state my name. I think I'm known yet, Don Haydo on Rochelle Drive. I'd like to take this opportunity just to say that it's wonderful for me to be back in council chambers and watch our village officials representing the residents of this beautiful village. It's an honor, again, it's been a long time. Not to our doing so, hopefully. Also at this time, I'd like to wish the mayor and his family and the council members the best of health and wealth and Happy New Year, even though it's March first. It's been a while since we've been able to get together. First of all, though, as far as official business, I have some questions and concerns. I'd like to know if the mayor or the council members are aware of the bill that was recently signed into law by our governor, Dewine, on fireworks? Has there been any thoughts on this by the council members or the mayor in regard to potential issues going forward?
Yeah, and I can answer that. Don, I know I received some of that stuff, you know, from the governor and from, from our state reps, and we kind of, me and the chief talked a little bit. We wanted to see where it felt, okay? And so that is something that I will be, and the chief's going to probably be talking to the safety and insurance committee along with all of council and see what we want to do there. Just in some brief discussions, we probably want to leave ours the way it is, just without saying anything, because you, the communities can still be restrictive, from what I understand, and that's something we'll talk to our law department too. But he is allowing communities to open it up if you want to allow fireworks. It doesn't necessarily mean that everybody can have fireworks in their community, from what we understand.
Well, that's kind of the way I understand it a little bit from what I've read in the papers, that it was kind of open to us add or subtract by the villages or the cities, which I think we should be thankful for that, because it should be home rule. Because I anticipate problems with this, without question. Is anybody familiar with an article that was recently in the Akron Beacon Journal on a company that I understand it to be two brothers that bought the Rinky Dink Amusement Park, I guess is what it was, on Route eighteen? And they stated in the article, they're basically making our argument force. They're presently in the business of selling fireworks. They're one of the largest in the state and they want to become the largest. They personally bought the property and they plan on building the biggest fireworks store. I don't recall now at this moment exactly if they phrased it in the state, but it's certainly that, or even in the country. And they say their customers come from miles and also out of town. So I was very shocked and dismayed and surprised that Governor Dewine signed this bill because he was against it initially. And for some reason, he changed his mind. And not only changed his mind, he opens it up to any reason whatsoever to have fireworks and set them off. Like anything that's on the calendar is a so-called holiday, or what happens if a person just, I can think of situations where people have birthdays or whatever like that. And that's why I think our council and leadership should be proactive rather than react. Because it's, it's a wide open game with this bill, as I understand it. Why he put all these different dates in there? To make it logical that you can set off fireworks for what? Thanksgiving? Valentine's Day? It should be the lady in your life, if you're a male, that sets off your fireworks. At least that's what happens with me. So, you know, it's just a wide open problem, I think, at the moment. Uh, there was a mayor briefly after the bill was signed, it wasn't from around here, but he made a comment that he was contacting other surrounding communities, that they should get together and hold dialogue on this. Absolutely, and I feel the same way here. Because every municipality that we border could have the same problems we could have. And if you talk to Northfield, they'll tell you about the problems they've already had, because I've talked to them, they know me. They know me. Fireworks are loud and they carry. They're very disruptive for the people. We have a lot of seniors, of course. We have a lot of people with animals. And certainly, they don't know what to make of this. So I would like to see our village representatives get involved in this and do some dialogue on it and put your thoughts together and see what we can do to put ourselves in a positive position. I think the law goes into effect sometime in next June, isn't it?
Yeah.
Not the early part, somewhere. I forget what the exact day is, but it's sometime in June.
Because there's, there's talk that that might even change.
Yeah. So I'm looking forward to whatever help I can offer to our village officials in regard to information or that, but I think it's something definitely that should be looked into. So we're in right position before it goes into effect. Because I don't like, I didn't like what I read in that article. These owners are very aggressive, in fact, they even stated in there, we couldn't wait for the law to be passed, which is now it's all systems go, and they're gonna throw everything at it to become the biggest and the best, so to speak.
I mean, we have a large one right now, and, you know, that's been there for years in Hudson, that's been there for years too.
And just a couple other small things right now at the moment, if I may. What do we have so-called on the books, if you can use that phrase, in regard to flagpoles?
As far as, like.
In regard to how they're allowed, what is the intent? Because we're living in different times. And I, I kind of go back to when condominiums first came out. And I moved into a condominium, sold my house, that was in Richmond Heights at that time. And then the problems really started to come aboard. People coming in there thought they were, could do anything that they want. So I ran for office, and I was on the board of trustees as far as the condominium association. And I couldn't believe some of the problems we're running into. One person wants a blue door, another person wants a red door, or they want to put a sign in their window. And even Mr. Trivissano, may he rest in peace, sometimes I agreed with him, sometimes I didn't. But the reason why I enter him into the conversation is this, one day I'm listening to him on the radio, and it happened to entail a person in the condominium on the west side. And it said they were stopping him, he was a veteran, stopping him from putting the American flag in his window. And Trivissano says, send me over there, I'll take care, I'll, I'll, I'll get it all straightened out, you know how Mike is. I loved him for that, as long as it made common sense. I says, Mike, they got rules and regulations on this. Filed with the state of Ohio, you just can't do everything you want. So, and he couldn't, they made him take the flag down. I mean, the intent is good, but you just can't do anything that you want. On the outside, you own from the inside, the inn, the walls. So it's a learning experience from that aspect. So I think we're, could be facing the same thing with the fireworks. People feel that they have an open door now, no matter what the holiday, or what the day is, or what the reason is. And it's gonna be hard to stop unless we've got something on paper. That's the reason why we have rules and regulations, that's why we have council representing our villages. Because you can't always expect people to do the right thing. So anyhow, good luck, and it's a pleasure to see you again. God bless.
Thank you, Don, for your comments. Any comments from?
Um, no, we actually just got that random person, a different random person with those random letters on here. It happens every meeting, I don't know.
I had that also at the construction.
Yeah, otherwise, no, we, the comments we have.
We get somebody that, you can't see who it is, it's just a bunch of letters and numbers.
I don't know if we can block that.
I don't know that we can, because it's a different person each time.
Somebody hacking into, somebody hacking into our Walton Hills council.
The message is almost the same every time, the letters they spell out are like V Y N, but then, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I had like V U N O N P T.
It's nothing harmful and nothing obscene, but it's just bizarre, because every time it's a different name that comes up. All the other comments were pertaining to our good sound quality today.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we're really good on the sound.
Yeah.
Really good on it. Mr. Mayor, just to talk about what Mr. Heydo brought up about, I don't know what, anything about fireworks, I have to research that, and we will.
We'll have discussions on that, that's something that's coming.
Because I agree with you, and people don't, a lot of, I shouldn't say people don't, but there are instances when they don't know when to stop, it's 11:12, 1:00 in the morning, and it's still going on. But with the advertising and things like that, see, we don't have any HOAs around here. We did have a street way back when that was built, when I first got on council years ago, they put in some restrictions, the builder, who is a village resident, put in some restrictions on the homes, like the side loading garage, I believe, and some other things. And so that's the closest thing we had to an HOA-type of thing. And I know you can do more, it's like a chartered municipality, you can do more than with a municipality such as this, it does state home rule. We've had these conversations, mostly with like political signs, with several law directors, every law director we've ever had since I've been here, and probably since before we've been here. And we had an email not too long ago from a resident who was upset, somebody had a sign out, a political sign, it was an old political sign, from a past political person, and they didn't like it and wanted us to take it down. Well, I responded, and I stated that every law director has told us that is a First Amendment right, and we would lose horribly in court if we were to try to make somebody take down their sign, especially a political sign. If it is, we would have a leg to stand on if it were a safety issue, let's say you're coming around a corner and the sign's big, you can't see traffic or pedestrians, something like that, that would be one instance. But if somebody's got a sign or a flag, and I know people, there was somebody, Mr. Nielsen saw a horrible sign with very, you know, graphic language on it, posted outside of one of the houses. And it's very difficult, now HOAs, as you know, are different, you know, the white mailboxes or the blue mailboxes, pink doors, whatever. But in a regular municipality, it's very, very tough. And we do have those laws on the books, but it's, as you know, the laws in that instance are for the people who do obey the rules, you know, honorably, and in that. So it's, I don't know if the mayor wants to expand on that, but we've tried, we've had issues before with people that have, have things like that, and.
Well, I think we would all hope that at some point, the homeowners would choose not the vulgar route.
Right.
With their political signs, because we do have children, you know, in the village and things like that, but unfortunately, not all of our residents feel that way.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Heydo.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick note, just.
Go ahead, Mr. Nielsen.
Angela, with the comments about the speaker, just want to thank Councilman Spitsnagle for the extra effort and time he put in saving the village money with this, this system that they have, but he, he spent some time here, a few nights.
He did, along with our resident, Soren, yes.
He, he, he did a, did a nice job. Thank you.
I was, I was the gopher.
Yeah. Put some time, he put some time.
I was the gopher, the laptop.
Well, Soren offered.
Mr. Weeden.
Yeah, Mayor Holgraf, members of council, I just wanted to follow up from Mr. Heydo's fine words, first of all, his appreciation and compliments to us for the responsibility that we have, and also, you know, just reminding us about the fireworks law that is, that was signed into law, and although, you know, Mayor, we, I know you mentioned that, you know, we may not have to change anything as it relates to Walton Hills, but being that, being that law, I believe, sets the date of July 1st of 2022 as the date where whatever the change is going to be goes into effect, you know, whatever, you know, whatever we're gonna do, whatever Walton Hills needs to do, not we, whatever Walton Hills needs to do to educate our community as to where we stand, I think that, you know, the time is now for us to, you know, come up to speed as to whatever we want to communicate or what our stand is, because otherwise, if people know July 1st is that date, and stuff is down the road, you know, people are gonna do whatever they're going to do.
That's a good idea.
From, from where, from where I live, which is right down the street from Mr. Heydo, it's generally the fireworks, this, this noise that I generally hear is actually coming from a neighboring community, not so much from Walton Hills. It's, it's coming from the other, you know, we're, we're right on the, on the border of Summit County, so it comes from our neighboring communities on the other side. Also, there's a, our friends over to the north in Bedford, you know, they often talk about how much disruption they get currently. You know, Walton Hills gets some, but I, I haven't heard an excessive amount, and I have not heard an excessive amount of fireworks from within Walton Hills, and if that's, if that's, you know, the area we're going to be focusing, going to try to maintain that, yeah, let's, let's make sure it's in place well before July 1st. Thank you, Mr. Heydo.
We do have one comment from Karen Rimming, that says, thank you for continually streaming all meetings. We try. Sometimes technology isn't our friend, but we try.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For, for what it's worth, the fireworks, I have heard extreme in the village, or it sounds like it's in the village, you know, I'm close to Valley View, but I can hear Independence when they're setting off their fireworks.
Sure.
It just echoes all the way to me. I, I can hear it in my living room, TV on, doors closed, you know, and stuff, and I can tell when they're doing it, and I can also hear Brexville and Broadview Heights too, besides, you know, Sagamore or Northfield. So we, by nature of what our village is, I think it just amplifies it so much more in some areas.
Yeah, I guess maybe I should have clarified, I mean, those types of, you know, community-sponsored events, you're gonna have those. I guess what I, what I was referring to was not community-sponsored events, on, on, from the, our neighbors from the south, you know, these are, you know, we, we, we hear those fireworks that are not sponsored by.
Yeah.
By the community, but by residents. And that's, that's really what I was, I was trying, I mean, I didn't make it as clear, but from the resident's standpoint, we hear it from over there, not so much in the village. From the residents.
Yeah, well, I hear a lot of residents, and I think it's, again, because of Valley View being right there, and not necessarily a Valley View-sponsored event. When there is, definitively, I can hear that loud as a bell, but I can hear the other communities too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen. I live, I live on a hill right there, just off of Alexander, believe me, there's plenty of people, shoot them off here in Walton Hills, I hear it all around, so it all comes, you know, here. But most of the people, you know, by 11 o'clock, it's, they're done, so it's, you know, it's what it is. I, no, I don't think anybody abuses it, but what Mr. Heydo was talking about, I think this, this could get out of hand.
Absolutely.
This is a whole different, different ballgame now, so.
The, the important part, which, you know, about the community events, and what happened in the last two years with the COVID-19, and the communities not having those sponsored events because of the gatherings, it did promote more people to do things in their own yard, and so there, there was an increase in the communities of those activities. I mean, that was something I know we talked about with some of the surrounding mayors because of that. You know, you, a lot of people, they take their kids to see the fireworks at a neighboring community or their community, and the last couple of years, some of that was limited because of the gathering. So those controlled events are certainly a lot safer and better, so, I think, but that's definitely something we'll have on our radar, I'll see what, maybe we'll have something for the COW meeting next week, it just, we, we want to really get it, understand it well, and have some good constructive discussion on it, so, we'll see what we come up with, but we'll move it forward here, so. Okay, any other questions related to anything else? Anything from residents that are watching our live stream?
No, no questions.
Is council all good then?
Yeah.
Anything, Mr. Weeden, to bring forward from the, the committee to share with council that, from your infrastructure, or I think we pretty much covered everything, nothing for, okay, good. Okay, can I ask for a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Second, second by Mr. Weeden. Hold on to the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitsnagle?
Yes.
Councilman Weeden?
Yes. Committee of the whole meeting of Tuesday, March 1st, 2022, adjourned at 8:28 PM.
Stick with that topic, we want it to start.
Well, I know.
You know what I mean, I know, it's off, but.
Thank you, everybody.
I kept looking up to this, where's the actual council purpose? Oh, no. Hour at five, right?
Three soon, we'll be at three.
We're naked up here, plus without a jacket, we're naked up here.
Then there were five.
Everybody have a good week.